Before I gavel in, I'd like to just take an opportunity to offer a brief moment of silence for an extraordinary Portlander, Bud Lewis. Bud Lewis passed away on Monday at the age of 100. He served as commander of the Sunshine Division here in Portland from 1963 to 1973, and was a lifelong supporter of the division's work to help Portlanders in need. Last year, he raised $125,000 for the Sunshine Division through a fundraising effort in which he walked laps every day leading up to his 100th birthday, walking over 53 miles in total. Bud was known for saying, "If you show interest in, respect for, and kindness towards people, it will always be the right thing to do." Bud will be deeply missed. He was an important fixture, an iconic fixture here in the city of Portland, and our condolences go out to his family, his loved ones, and the thousands and thousands of lives that he touched in a positive way here in the city of Portland. I'd like to offer a moment of silence and remember of remembrance of Bud Lewis. Thank you. Colleagues, this is the Wednesday, February 24, 2021 morning session of the Portland City Council. Kealan, please call the roll.
Rubio?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Hardesty?
Here.
Maps?
Here.
Wheeler?
Here. Under Portland City Code and state law, the city council is holding this meeting electronically. All members of the council are attending remotely by video and teleconference. And the city has made several avenues available for the public to listen to the audio broadcast of this meeting. Meetings available to the public on the city's YouTube channel, EGOPDX, www-portlandoregon.gov/video, as well as Channel 3. The public can also provide written testimony to the council by emailing the council clerk at cctestimony@portlandoregon.gov. The council is taking these steps as a result of the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic and the need to limit in-person contact and to promote physical distancing. Pandemic is an emergency that threatens the public health, safety, and welfare, which requires us to meet remotely by electronic communications. Thank you all for your patience, your flexibility, and your understanding as we manage through these challenging times to conduct the city's business. With that, we'll hear from legal counsel on the rules of order in decorum. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. To participate in council meetings, you may sign up in advance with the council clerk's office for communications to briefly speak about any subject. You may also sign up for public testimony on resolutions or the first readings of ordinances. The published council agenda at portlandoregon.gov/auditor contains information about how and when you may sign up for testimony while the council is holding electronic meetings. Your testimony should address the matter being considered at the time. When testifying, please state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Please disclose if you are a lobbyist. If you are representing an organization, please identify it. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. When your time is up, the presiding officer will ask you to conclude. Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If there are disruptions, a warning will be given that further disruption may result in the person being placed on hold or ejected from the remainder of the electronic meeting. Please be aware that all council meetings are recorded. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. First up is Communications, item 103.
Request of Sam McGonigal Wood to address council regarding Hazel Nut Grove Tiny Cabin Village, and Diana Richardson will be speaking.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Diana.
Oh, good. I can't see anybody, so, all right. I'm a community member and friend of Hazel Nut Grove Village. We are all concerned. We're focused in doing whatever is in the best interests of the whole community. So I ask you, does your plan to destroy the community of Hazel Nut Grove align with your stated goal of seeking solutions to homelessness? Commissioners, you have only to listen to the residents of the Grove tell their stories to understand why we must save Hazel Nut Grove. Commissioners, we are urging you to join your colleagues in responding to and meeting with residents of Hazel Nut Grove and publicly declaring your support for keeping this important community intact. Now Christine Alex, a Grove resident who is working right now, so she sent this video of her message to you.
Hey, everyone. Thanks for letting me speak today. My husband and I have been at Hazel Nut Grove for about one year after we were priced out of affordable housing in 2015.
Am I frozen, or is the video frozen?
...by the last summer of her life. Able to get past the never- Hey, everyone. Thanks for letting me speak today. My husband and I have been at Hazel Nut Grove for about one year after we were priced out of affordable- ...and shelters with our senior hound. After we moved to- ...when we got in- ...ground- ...with many resources being closed right now.
So Mayor, it looks like we've got some video difficulties. Maybe we just want to have our speaker share what we would have seen on the video.
Yeah, and maybe what we could do is, Kealan, if you could go ahead and have that video distributed to each of us, I'd actually like to see it. So it's obviously not going to work right now. There's probably some bandwidth issues, but if we could get a link to it, I'd like to be able to review that. But I agree with Commissioner Hardesty. Diana, if you could just tell us what you know.
Yes, if you can hear me now?
Yep.
Thank you. I will actually read her testimony.
Thank you.
Certainly. Just a second. It won't be the same, but... Hey, everyone. Thanks for letting me speak today. My husband and I have been at Hazel Nut Grove for about one year after we were priced out of affordable housing back in 2015. We worked hard to find sustainable housing, even though I had a full-time job, and we had to stay in tents and shelters with our senior hound. After we moved to Hazel Nut, our dog was able to enjoy the last summer of her life, safe and comfortable. My family was able to get past the never-ending anxiety from being unhoused. We could finally rest and be free to have our lives. When we got into this wonderful community, I was given a position with Ground Score Association, a low-barrier jobs program. We have some locations taking bile returns as a community service. With many resources being closed right now, a resource I have used ever since I was a child, it really helps to have your own space to show up, prepared for any job. Before Hazel Nut, we applied for apartments. We did Section 8, rent well, home forward, everything we were supposed to do with a good rental history, no damage or evictions, and we still ended up in tents and shelters. I don't want to go back to an apartment because they haven't been a sustainable housing option for us. Over the last six years, I have seen many friends get housing only to end up back on the streets while their vouchers ran out. During this blizzard, half the city had no power. My neighbors and I ran a fire pit, propane heaters, enjoyed hot food and coffee while watching movies on our phones. We managed it just fine. We were capable of caring for ourselves and each other. Hazel Nut Grove should be allowed to function as we have and as they have because it works. We need more villages like it. For the last five years, I have heard talk about a five-year plan to end houselessness. I see little to no progress. I have a one-year plan: self-governed villages. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it, and if you could get that link to us, we'll look forward to watching it.
And Mayor, if I may, before we move on, I just want to-
Commissioner Hardesty.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say to the residents of Hazel Nut Grove that I apologize for the confusion that has been caused by us, the city council, and I hope this week we can send a clear message that everybody will understand what the goals are. And so I just feel the need to say I apologize on behalf of us as sending you very mixed messages over the last week.
Next up, time's certain. Actually, we're not quite there. Let's go to the consent agenda. Kealan, have any items been pulled off of the consent?
Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Ryan.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't have my, I didn't put my hand up. First of all, I want to thank Diana for that testimony, and I do look forward to seeing the video. I thought it was just fair to, and I also really appreciated meeting with the residents of Hazel Nut Grove recently and their advocates. I thought it was important at this moment to raise some awareness of action that is relevant to this topic. And so I just want to cover a couple points. The Joint Office, the key word in that is joint. So with our colleagues at the county and those of us at the city, we agreed to reach out to the greater provider community. And at this time, there's a request for proposals to seek services to operate additional shelters, which will include safe park shelters across the city. I wanted people to know that at this time. And I also, in addition, the Planning Commission is bringing their work to the council through the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability as we identify public land for such usage. Compliance lens will be part of this process, of course. And I want to thank Commissioner Rubio and the team at the Bureau for their work that will be coming sometime in March. The houselessness residents and the entire city deserve a government that is moving action forward. We are, and I, along with all my colleagues, are focused on this issue. And we will stay focused to build a system from streets to stability. And I am grateful at this time that there are no evictions planned for Hazel Nut Grove at this time. So I just wanted to bring some consistency of clarity of action that's taking place at this time that's pertinent to this topic. And thank you again for your testimony.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Back to the consent agenda. Kealan, have any items been pulled off of the consent agenda?
We've had no requests.
Very good. Please call the roll.
Rubio?
Aye, are here.
Ryan?
Aye.
Hardesty?
We've all done that, Commissioner Rubio.
My apologies.
No, you fool me, I will sit here.
Keeping it real. Keeping it real.
Hardesty?
Aye.
Maps?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The consent agenda is adopted. Next item, 104, please, time's certain.
Accept Sport Oregon's formerly Oregon Sports Authority annual report on national and international sports marketing activities and event recruiting services.
Colleagues, please welcome Jim Exel, CEO of Sports Oregon, formerly known as the Oregon Sports Authority, to present their annual report to the Portland City Council. The report is a requirement of the city's contract with Sports Oregon to provide sports marketing and event recruiting services. Sports Oregon works tirelessly to attract signature national and even international sporting events to our city, providing exciting entertainment options, raising the city's profile, and supporting our local economy. This, the events Sports Oregon brings to Portland also generate city revenues through increasing the number of hotel rooms that are occupied, particularly by major event attendees, and of course, generating user fees for events at the Rose Quarter as well as Providence Park. And as you all know, the COVID-19 pandemic has significantly impacted our ability to hold public events of all kinds and has had an outsized impact on the entertainment, tourism, and other related industries. We're going to hear more from Jim about how Sports Oregon has been affected and how they've adopted and how they're preparing for recovery. So with that, welcome Jim, and thank you for being here today.
Mayor Wheeler, Commissioner Hardesty, Ryan, Rubio, and Maps. Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to present to you today. And also, on behalf of our membership, just a thank you, a sincere thank you for your leadership and service for our community. Obviously, challenging times and issues going on, and we're fully supportive of everything and anywhere we can lean in, we are there. I'd just like to give a quick summary on Sport Oregon. We're two organizations, nonprofits. We have a nonprofit 501(c)(6), which is really focused on sports tourism and also the services that we provide to the city and our communities. We also have, and the primary mission of the (c)(6) is to drive economic and quality-of-life benefit for our communities, specifically Portland. As far as our 501(c)(3), our Sport Oregon Foundation, our primary mission there is to to remove barriers to participation in physical activity, especially for underserved youth communities. We have a great and symbiotic relationship with the city and its venues, working closely with Carlisle and the City Office of Spectator Facilities and Development. Deep working relationships with Travel Portland and Travel Oregon. We're heavily involved in the strategies and conversations around recovery. Sports and community events are seen widely by all of us as being on the front edge of our comeback, both economically and bringing livability back in our community from COVID and everything else. We really appreciate, you know, the partnership with the city. It's indispensable to our mutual success. In many of the events that I'll be referencing in this report, at least several members of city council and your staffs have been integral to success. Therefore, our successes really are shared successes with you and the city. Each of you deserve credit for making it all happen. Our real focus through COVID has been on revenue, securing new events, and preserving jobs and securing new jobs. The other thing, you know, we're supported by 150 corporations and individuals in our community. That's our annual budget is supported, including our contract with the city. And I, you know, I'm proud to say that we had an incredible retention rate of those memberships through COVID. Our members remain deeply committed to our mission and the importance of our mission, especially in these times. Also, as we work through this report, I'll move through it quickly. I try not to be repetitive. And as we move through it, it isn't in a prior, in an order of the biggest events. It's kind of in order of how, where they fall in the cadence of the reporting year. Also, we are working hard on, for next year's report, to be able to add more detailed metrics. We've been working closely with our National Association on things that are both direct and indirect metrics that I think give a clear picture into the value of our work. With that, let's move quickly into the reporting year, July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2020, the most recently completed year. We'll lead off with the Little League Softball World Series. Unfortunately, because of the things that have gone on with the family ownership of Alvin Rose, this event, which had been here for 25 years and had really grown in impact, there was 27 of these games televised on ESPN and internationally from Portland, showing our beautiful city in the summer. It went from, "This is good, and we're going to stay here forever," to all of a sudden gone. But that's water under the bridge. We're going to work with Little League to see if we can somehow get back into the mix, either with a Portland-centric facility or something on the edges of our metro area. It's going to be a big lift. There's very competitive, over 25 cities put in bids to host this event. And, but before any of those get traction, we're going to try to come back to why they stayed in Portland for 25 years and come up with a solution that may work for them. Next one I'd like to touch on is the IndyCar Grand Prix of Portland. This event, the second year it was held, was in 2019. This is a huge event. It has incredible growth potential, not just for economic impact, but tourism and business development recruitment in the future. It's a Pacific Rim audience. There's only 12 domestic markets that get to host IndyCar. IndyCar is on a tremendous upswing with ratings, both nationally and internationally. It has new ownership. Roger Penske has taken on ownership of his group of companies, not just of the series, but Indianapolis Motor Speedway, and he's pumping a lot of investment into continuing to lift this circuit. And so those things are exciting and things that we're really trying to focus on with Travel Portland and others, on how to really use this as an annual building block event. It has tremendous economic impacts on room nights and local businesses. In 2019, we worked to bring the event downtown. We hosted a red carpet event for team owners and drivers and local business community and travel tourism community downtown prior to the race with great success. I was called Night is Speed. It was a televised event locally on an NBC Sports affiliate. And in the future here, we'd like to explore, bring a Broadway Avenue Pioneer Courthouse event to kick off the week with the cars themselves coming downtown through a parade as they arrive into town and start to generate more excitement and awareness around that. Next, we have the Road Runners Club of America Convention that we were supposed to host in March. Obviously, COVID canceled that. Working diligently with organizers to reschedule that in a future year. Obviously, with Portland's running culture and with the athletic companies, and Adidas and Nike and others that are here, we're a very appealing market for them to host this annual event. Next, we had the NCAA Women's Basketball West Regional that was supposed to take place March 28 and 30. This one hurt not just because the Ducks didn't get a shot to hang a banner for our state, and those student athletes robbed the experience, but really the impacts it would have had. And it would have been a tremendous momentum builder for our final bid pitch to host the women's Final Four in future years, as the whole committee would have been in attendance for that. We had also sold more tickets leading into that event than we drew the previous year in total. We were double the pre-sale because of the excitement around women's basketball. And it was undoubtedly, if the Ducks had matriculated the final game, we would have set an all-time attendance record, not just for our region, West Region, but all four regions for women's basketball. Next, it's Sport Oregon's Track Town Youth League. This would have been in its sixth year, another casualty of COVID. We host it in 16 communities statewide. Locally, we have about 800 youth that participate. It is a growing event that will be adding more events, not just in the Portland metro area, but statewide as we move forward out of COVID. Finally, the Northwest Shootout was another cancellation. It's a high school All-Star game that's gone on for 25 years, has raised hundreds of thousands of dollars for our foundation to redistribute the community to nonprofits that get kids physically active, especially in underserved communities. This event actually happens in Hillsborough with the teams, and the banquets and everything happened in downtown Portland. We look forward to reviving this event. It's an annual All-Star game pitting Washington and Oregon boys and girls high school All-Star teams. Next, I'd like to move into event bid summary of our current reporting year. Again, July 2019 through June 30, 2020. First off, the NC2A. This was a big year for us this past year as we entered the next four-year cycle of NC2A events, the bid cycle that is for 2023 through 2026. Highlighted in our bids, as everybody knows, we've made a significant push effort. City was really behind it. City Hall is behind it. Everybody. And unfortunately, we fell short. We are dusting ourselves off and back, putting ourselves back in the game as the next bid cycle will start in about 18 months. So we'll be targeting this event in the '27 through '29 cycle for women's Final Four. We also bid for men's and women's basketball regionals in 2024 through 2026. Next slide, we also bid for first and second round men's tournaments in the Modus Center for '23-'26, and also the women's volleyball championships, which come with, both the women's volleyball championships and the women's basketball championships come with a significant coaches convention with over 3,000 attendees that would fill the convention center every square inch of it and virtually book every hotel room in the city. Moving forward, we are also still actively bidding for the Sports ETA conventions. We were in San Diego last week for meetings on that. We're hopeful to get it for '24 or '26. We feel really good. We're a finalist again. We're also bidding for synchronized, US synchronized skating championships as well as other US figure skating championship events. Also, Triple Crown softball. We're in bid cycles for the next four years on that. Next slide. So our upcoming reporting year that we're currently in, the, we've obviously suffered cancellations because of COVID. All of these events will work in diligently to bring back. Our first slide was the National Veterans Wheelchair Games. This was a really neat event that would have happened at the convention center. Significant number of room nights and participants coming from all over the country, and it would have been an OCC event. We're in deep discussions with them about the future. We have rebooked it for 2023, but how we can activate that event throughout our community. Next, it was Triple Crown softball. We had a significant event this past summer that was canceled. Grand Prix of Portland, the next slide, also canceled. The good news is, is that promoters of the Grand Prix Green Savory Racing just signed this pass, I think in December, November, a three-year extension with the city of Portland and PIR. And we work closely with them on a weekly and monthly basis to ensure that success within the community of that event. Again, I said this is, we see this as an event that has tremendous growth opportunity for our community. Next, also a couple other ones that we don't, didn't highlight. PK Invitational was canceled this year, as well as upcoming Northwest Shootout. Future, other initiatives that we did this year. This one, the first one took a tremendous amount of effort. We basically brought together all the sports entities under one voice from our professional sports teams, our colleges, the high schools, OSAA, and other youth sports organizations, both in the city and statewide, to be kind of the main conduit with the governor's office and with counties on sports and bringing sports back safely and responsibly continues to be a big lift. There were more summits put in just recently. Also worked closely with Travel Portland on this and Travel Oregon Also worked closely with Travel Portland on this and Travel Oregon as we're actively recruiting events that could lead us out of of the situation here on a tourism standpoint with sports tourism and and start to see a significant bookings at OCC Expo Center and and Rose Quarter Complex and also Providence Park. We work with Travel Portland, Travel Oregon Convention Center, Portland Expo. Just again, ongoing work with those organizations on identifying and bidding and soliciting future events for community recovery. The Canby of Portland Classic, which is the oldest women's professional golf tournament in the country at 50. They'll be celebrating their 50th year. We work closely with them and got their necessary approvals to host that event last year. Unfortunately, we didn't show real well because of the wildfires. Next slide, future events. Grand Prix booked through '23, as as noted. Next, Oregon 22 World Athletics Conversations. There could be the opportunity to restart the conversations. We'll know in the next 30 to 60 days about Portland hosting the World Championship Marathons. Again, this will be a tremendous opportunity. Next slide. We have the NERSA Convention coming in '22 in spring. Significant event, national event for the convention center. Next slide. When NCAA men's basketball first and second rounds will be, we won these bids. We'll be hosting on March 22 and March of '26. We also, next slide, won the Super Regional, oh, excuse me, I jumped one here. PK 85, Phil Knight Invitational is going to be coming in November '22. This was the greatest collection, the PK 80 Tournament. Significant exposure for our marketplace and visitors. And we're working closely with the Blazers and ESPN to build upon that success for the future. What I thought I was going to reference is Women's Super Regional. This is new. This was, I guess, the consolation prize for not getting the Final Four, and it's a pretty good one. In '24, we'll be hosting instead of four regionals, they condensed them into two super regionals with eight teams, so double the number of teams, double the number of broadcasts from here, and double the impact. There's just a few other future event highlights I'd like to touch on that we that have surfaced since we submitted this report. We have been working and leading, bringing a group together for an annual event at Oregon Convention Center called World of Sports to capitalize on Portland being the epicenter of global sports. Also, there's a group that is trying to organize Portland to host the UCI World Cycling Championships in now 2029. We've been meeting with them for over two years and just staying close to what that activity and advising accordingly. Sports franchise pursuits and support, facility development, Major League Baseball. We actually, in our new offices, subleased space to Portland Diamond Project, continue to work with them where needed and where we can help and and through connections, leverage, et cetera. Next slide, Veterans Memorial Call CM. We work on the committee. We have representation on the evaluation committee for the future of VMC and the and the work being done there and bring a voice to that. You know, other things that we're working on, Expo Center, the future of the Expo Center. We have submitted for Metro feasibility around, especially around all C and D, to become full-time athletic complexes for indoor floor sports, court sports, that would have huge impacts in the community for community benefit. But also, sports tourism is big drivers. There's a major void in the I-5 corridor from Northern California all the way up to Canada. And it would fill an incredible need in this, in the Pacific Northwest. Also worked on the Portland Parks Recreation Levy Committee. Work closely with the Portland Winterhawks and meeting with prospective ownership groups and working with them with their new ownership group on, again, a lot of approvals needed with state, with COVID approval. We're closely with the Vancouver Whitecaps and the Timbers and MLS to relocate that team to Portland. It was a neat story in that it reopened the Hilton Tower downtown for 45 days. It got upwards of 20 individuals, their jobs back full-time. Little impact, but big impacts on those 20 families. We've also worked with the Timbers and Thorns on similar deals with the the Women's League and their return to play and hosting a possible tournament in Portland this spring. Community impact and projects, this is really our foundation work. We manage a youth ticket exchange program and really getting the tickets to underserved youth organizations. This is something we've been doing for 10 years. Brings a lot of joy to these kids and great experiences. SAW, we've been very active in. Matter of fact, we're set up across the street of our office today, providing coffee and refreshments and and snacks to all the volunteers and then our staff actively putting on the vests and picking up trash in in our neighborhoods. So we're proud of the partnership with Portland Gear on that and and SAW. We had a fundraiser that we did this summer to help out Playworks Pacific Northwest. And our staff did a virtual relay and ran a simulated race from Medford, Oregon to Medford, Massachusetts. And we raised just under $9,000 for our foundation, Playworks, and a couple other charities. This was a big one. We are going to make this an annual event. We have been supporting Hot the Hopscotch Foundation, which really addresses food insecurity in Portland high schools and middle schools. How can kids be active in activities, whether it's band, cheer, dance, any other type of after-school activity or sports if they're hungry? And I don't have to tell you guys what the need is there. And then just with COVID, the impacts that had on families, our schools not being open. Hopscotch is an all-volunteer organization. We stepped up and decided to do a big fundraiser with them to to raise money for food insecurity in our community for not just kids, but families. We televised the event on Fox. Sport Oregon produced all aspects of it. Had some great storytelling about this need in our community. It was on Fox and also on NBC Sports Northwest in our special. And I'm proud to say that we far exceeded our expectations. We were able to raise $254,000 to address these needs in our community. We will make this an annual event. We think we can double our impact this coming fall. And very proud of our our staff and and all the companies that stepped up to support this endeavor. Lastly, Sport Oregon moved into new office. This is a big moment for our organization. We're in our 28th year. We were very intentional with where we sought out our space. We wanted to be downtown. We wanted to go into street level. And we wanted to significantly change or lift an area of our city that needed it. We found the location only four or five blocks from our our previous location, and it's across from Providence Park. We took the retail space in the Morrison Building. It's a low-income housing building. It had been, the space had been occupied for only three of the previous 15 years since the building was constructed. Three restaurants happened to be in space. All all just didn't make it. Probably not a good restaurant location, but we're very proud of this. It's also has space for community groups and other nonprofits to hold meetings, et cetera. And we look forward to the day after COVID that we can share it with the community. It's really neat. A lot of community and members of ours stepped up with donated materials and services. The signs that you see being installed there were donated by vendors of US Bank, National Signage Vendor. So it's been really neat to 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 bring this project to life. And that is it. Open to any questions that you may have about the past years or future and get your thoughts.
Jim, thank you for that excellent presentation. Colleagues, any questions for Mr. Edsel? Commissioner Hardesty.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for that very in-depth presentation. One thing struck me was when you talked about the Expo Center and potentially turning that into a sports something or other for the future. And so I I'm just curious about how that process would work. Is that a, I mean, as you said, you spoke to Metro about it because they actually managed that property. But so I'm just curious about if, in fact, that happens, what is the ask that you're going to have for the city of Portland?
There may not be any ask. I mean, we're, it's preliminary, as you might know, probably know, that Metro is evaluating the future of the Expo Center. You know, whether it becomes housing or it becomes distribution. You know, we think that 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 site holds significant historical place in our community. And both, you know, with Vanport and the and the BIPOC community that really came to our, to Portland during World War II with the shipyards and all that. And then also with, you know, there's, there's not such great history also there with, you know, the internment camp for the Japanese Americans and so forth. You know, we think that the the site with its proximity to Delta Park and the PIR, it's a highly leverageable area. The infrastructure that's there with Chanson Beach, the hotel groupings that are out there and so forth, fit the price range that really supports the youth and adult sports tourism. We think that on weekends, we can drive significant impacts. If those halls were, had the flexibility to be indoor sports spaces, it wouldn't take much. You know, investment-wise compared to building an all-new facility. And also during the week, they become a great community benefit to to, especially to the north and northeast Portland communities. There's, as we all know, huge voids in both indoor and outdoor field space and court space. And it's a leverageable asset because of its proximity to what we already have at Delta Park and also at PIR. So that's, our thinking is showing, we've been asked to present to them what would a sports alternative look like? And so we've, that that's what we've done.
Thank you very much for that explanation. I I I'm hoping that that conversation becomes broader and we bring more people into it as Metro continues their evaluation. Because I I think there are a lot of ideas about what could happen in that location. So I just wanted to make sure that the city wasn't actually giving tactical agreement to one proposal versus another by virtue of accepting this report. So I thank you very much, and I look forward to continuing that conversation.
And we'd be very interested individually or collectively having conversations with you all about your thoughts and get your feedback and help shape our position on it, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright.
Yes, good morning, Jim. It's good to see you and thank you for that report. I don't think it's a surprise to some of my colleagues that one of my passions is definitely sport. It's along with arts and music and film. And I think it's really important that we see the economic impact of the work that it brings to our region. I'll also have to say that somebody that sees the first two days of March Madness is high holy holidays, so I probably need to let people know. That's why I'll be out a couple days in late March, or no, early March or mid-March, yeah. My question is, what I didn't see on what we're going for, because I really do hope that we keep thinking big like you are, but I didn't see the NBA All-Star Game on there. And I'm bummed like a lot of people who have been Blazer fans for years that were one of the only franchises that's been around a while that hasn't hosted the All-Star Game. And so, and I also know that a lot of us, especially the Thorn fans out there, really love it when we've had World Cup, Women's World Cup here. So there are conversations about that as well. Those are my two, not to pile on that you're
No, no, absolutely.
I just wanted to push you a little bit more and think big with us, yeah.
You're almost teeing me up there. Yes, NBA All-Star Game. We're the only franchise and the oldest franchise that has never hosted our city. The Blazers have made, you know, significant efforts at different bid phases over the years. And we thought, my very first year, we worked with them on submitting a bid. And to great disappointment, we didn't receive it. It was actually the first time that Mr. Allen had gotten vocally active in voicing, and he was the head of the Board of Governors of the league. He had never asked for it, which frustrated, you know, his CEOs and presidents, like, because he just wasn't that type of individual. He did ask for it last time, and we still didn't get it. I think that with the Convention Center Hotel, some of the other hotels that have opened in the last 18 months downtown and with ones that are still under construction coming online over the next couple of years, our story only gets better. And we are, the Blazers are a key member, stakeholder and member of ours, and we work closely with them. And so we have been in conversations about kind of when is the right time? Is the next bid cycle? But it's something that I would like to see us host by the end of this decade. And it would be a huge deal for our community. Also, the the Blazers would be making a significant, it would cost Blazers millions of dollars to host. It's not, it's not an event that makes money. And we're pretty conscious of, you know, where we make our ass with the city. But this would be one that, you know, could down the road also put Portland back on the map and the positive light that we're looking, we're working really hard. As I, I don't, I don't shy away from the disappointment we we had from losing the Women's Final Four. That would have been a great event. We are, our marketplace, there's no better marketplace for women's sport than Portland, Oregon. Our city and our state support women's sports like no one else. That was a gut punch to us and our team, and which included Travel Portland, which included the Blazers and also Oregon State. We kind of led the four-pronged approach on that. We get, dust ourselves off, get right back in the game and get after it. I think that, you know, we do have an opportunity. Fortunately, with some of these events that are coming into the cycle with IndyCar, I really can't emphasize enough how big that could be. Also, it brings long-term stability to a city-owned facility at PIR and raises the profile repeatedly by being on national TV. It is one of the best road course tracks in America. And so sometimes we tend to forget or take for granted some assets that we have and and maybe we need to put a little bit more shine or effort into them. That's something that we take in the heart at at Sport Oregon. The World Track and Field Championships will bring the the eyes of the world televised over 300 countries. Being in Gene now in '22, it has been kind of a dark period of transition as we had to let the global sports calendar figure itself out with Olympics and everything else like that. But, you know, it'll be a, if we can get the opportunity, it'll be a big lift for the city. But also, what better platform could we have to a national and international audience of saying, hey, look at Portland? It's not what you've been, how we've been portrayed. And it would be a great, I think, opportunity for our community to rally together and show ourselves off to the world again. And we are looking at any other major events we could bring. Your question about World Cup Women's Soccer. Again, no better market than Portland, Oregon. We are very close to hosting five teams here, half the teams in the in the National Women's Soccer League for two months, would have filled up our hotels and played at Providence Park. Then the leagues and the teams, as COVID has kind of lessened its grip on our communities, they were able to come up with a plan where they could play in their individual markets. But that would have had some significant impacts, specific to World Cup. Where we're struggling is we have, we don't have an artificial surface there. And they want natural grass. And in the past, US Soccer and FIFA have allowed kind of portable fields to come in or just lay natural grass down over the artificial turf. There have been some problems in some markets with that and being a, not a good surface to play on. So they have kind of moved away from that, but there's some things evolving. And and we're, to begin with the Timbers and Thorns, on trying to pursue opportunities. We are working, and they're working very hard to bring a couple of international soccer events to the marketplace, as well as a big Premier League lacrosse event that would be here for a five-day weekend and be nationally televised as well. So we're active in those. Anything we can do to get Portland into spotlight and our community's spotlight, we're working on.
Thank you. Commissioner Rubio.
Thank you, and thanks, Jim, and Sport Oregon for this report. I really appreciate your work in the region, and I like Commissioner Ryan and others look forward to being able to gather in person again for sports viewing really soon. You mentioned that you are now working closely with Uh, you mentioned that you are now working closely with state colleges and universities on coordination. Uh, can you talk a little bit more about that and how it's different than how it operated before? And then what, if any, opportunities do you think that might open up?
Well, um, with COVID, obviously, um, the ability to compete uh for student athletes, no matter the level, uh, got taken away. But then as it started to be brought back in, uh, we have lagged as a state on on bringing uh sports back in our communities. Uh, we are still the only state in America that has not allowed Division Two, Division Three or NAI, men's and women's basketball to be played. And that, that's a little bit of a struggle for the stakeholders uh in that. Um, uh, we are all about being responsible, uh, they all are, uh, and doing it the right way. They have been willing to step up and do the same protocols and testing of their athletes and staffing that the Division One schools, Oregon State did. As you all may have seen, Portland and Portland State lagged in that uh as far as permissions. They, uh, we were the only state that was uh selective on who gets to play and who didn't get to play. So we really kind of played an advocacy role, but also tried to make it efficient for the governor's office. Instead of having thirty or forty entities coming at them, we tried to channel it. Uh, it was very unwielding, but um, and it was hard to achieve success. We still haven't achieved all this success that we'd like. But that was that kind of a new area, because we are kind of the Switzerland and and all these groups are members of ours. So us kind of rising to be uh an aggregator or a voice was a new uh, new grounds for us. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, and where do you see it eventually going? Do you think that that will come into closer coordination over time? Or is it just still to re- remain similarly aligned?
Yeah, it, and um, it, it's been confusing from Salem, to be very candid. Um, it, we're, 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 we're not following the science that's been, you know, like even small percentage of spectators at sporting events, which is vital to the health of uh these organizations. Um, there has been no documented cases as a result of fifteen percent of fans being in an indoor or outdoor facility, things like that. We're trying to bring that back. We need that for our community. We need it for downtown to have games again. Uh, we need people on the streets and enjoying everything, uh, but we, we need to do it responsibly. The Timbers and Blazers and Thorns are uh gonna be submitting plans to the state uh to try to bring spectators back in a responsible manner here fairly soon. Uh, we just need these little wins to build building blocks to open up more, more uh avenues. And then, you know, youth sports are happening around the state now. Um, but we got to get our kids back out of houses and we need them moving. And uh, and that's really important to help vitality of communities, so.
Thank you.
Very good. Uh, Jim, any word from our friends at the Portland Marathon?
Uh, there, they tried, uh, we follow it, uh, and with Travel Portland, uh, it tried to be supportive of their efforts. Uh, they tried to come up with a, a concept here this spring that was a marathon loop around the, the uh river that was in waves, spread over days. Um, unfortunately, the cost to put something like that on required a very high registration fee. And uh, from our understanding, there, there was very little interest in the running community for that model. And so that effort stopped. Um, the whole events world is going through a lot of changes. There are businesses going out of business uh that ran, run events. Um, we continue to look at models uh where we can own events for our community that are annual and predictable instead of always having to chase. Uh, that is a model that works very well in other marketplaces. Um, but uh, we, a, a marathon in Portland is, is vital. Uh, you know, all healthy cities have a healthy marathon. Ours obviously has struggled for a long time. So if we can help, I know uh Megan uh Conway's in our office right now, just stepped in from Saul from Travel Portland. But I mean, you know, we're all trying to work to see how we can help uh them uh be successful.
Well, their, their first effort in twenty nineteen was fantastic. It was a great course and it was well received. And then unfortunately, in twenty twenty, having to cancel it definitely knocked us off.
Yeah.
Good, well, ho- hopefully we'll see them back in twenty twenty-one and I'll, I'll make a note to follow up with them ASAP. Very good, colleagues. If that ends our questions, I'll entertain a motion to accept the report.
I'm uh, okay.
Motion from Commissioner Hardesty, second from Commissioner Ryan, any further discussion? Kealan, please call the roll.
Rubio.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Hardesty. Maps.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Jim, thank you. It's always an excellent report. I appreciate it. And uh, Sports Oregon, just like every other business, is going through a lot of changes and trying to be responsive to our new environment. And it's great to see you and the board and others working so hard to make sure that sports remains front and center in our community. I think it's going to be part of the comeback story, an important part of it, and I appreciate all that you've done. I vote aye, the report's accepted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kealan, we'll go to the regular agenda, please. First item on the regular agenda is item number one twelve.
Proclaim February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one to be Portland Jazz Master Day.
Colleagues, I'm pleased to sponsor this proclamation celebrating Ron Steen and his contributions to jazz music. A bandleader and drummer, Mr. Steen has helped shape Portland's jazz scene over the past several decades. Musicians from all over the world come to Portland just to perform with him and he's played with legendary jazz musicians, including Eddie Harris, Woody Shaw and Joe Henderson. As a lifelong Portlander, Mr. Steen has served as an ambassador for our city and its cultural life, connecting our community through the power of jazz music. It's his focus on connection, collaboration and mentorship that makes him a truly special leader in our community. Thank you, Ron, for your passion and for sharing it not only with Portlanders, but with the entire world. And so with that, I'd like to read a proclamation on behalf of the Portland City Council and then I'll ask my colleagues uh if they have, well, actually, why don't we start with that? I see Commissioner Hardesty's hand is up. Commissioner Hardesty.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, um, and thank you so much for bringing this uh resolution forward. Um, you may not know this, but uh, last week was uh Mel Brown Day. And uh, uh, both Mel Brown and Ron Steen, uh, in my thirty-two years have actually been like, uh, really icons around uh live jazz music. Um, and I just wanted to say, I remember when, um, in fact, I don't even know what year this is and if Ron Steen is here, maybe his memory is better than mine. Uh, but I remember when he opened a coffee shop that uh on uh Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard and Russell on the corner and um spent lots of fabulous Sunday afternoons there listening to world-class jazz musicians um in and out, just for the privilege to be able to uh, uh, spend some time on the stage uh with Ron Steen. Uh, you are correct when you say he is an icon. Um, he has actually uh been in the forefront of the music scene for the whole thirty-two years I, I've been here. Uh, but I know a lot longer than that. So um, what a great opportunity to acknowledge uh a trailblazer, a very quiet trailblazer in our community. Uh, very humble man and a man who has done so much to bring live music uh to children, elders and everyone in this community. So again, thank you, Mayor. I was pleasantly surprised when I saw this. Um, I would have given you a lot more stuff with that resolution had I known, but I am happy that we are taking today to honor uh such a wonderful uh community member uh and a visionary musician. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Maps.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and uh, thank you, colleagues. I'd like to also thank uh Mr. Ron Steen for his contribution to Portland's rich uh jazz scene and Portland's rich history of jazz. And I also want to take a moment to reflect on um the history of jazz here in Portland. People like to say that jazz is America's original art form. Um, and as a guy who's named Mangus, and I think my parents named me Mangus for a reason. Um, I think if you listen to jazz, you can um hear the history of the American people and even hear the history of Portland. For example, um, I think the word jazz first appeared in print in the year nineteen seventeen. And by the time we get to the nineteen thirties, Portland already had a rich jazz uh scene. And that jazz scene really exploded by the time we got to the uh, um, the World War Two period, partly because we had so many African-Americans uh moving to the region to contribute to uh the war effort, building ships and whatnot. Um, and of course, the forties were also a time of deep racial discrimination. African-Americans were limited in where they could live. For the most part, we had our black communities in northeast Portland and that's also where uh Portland's jazz scene really uh took off. So um, back in the nineteen forties, especially around Williams Avenue, you could find famous jazz clubs like Paul's Paradise, uh, the Frat House, the Savoy, uh, Little Sandy's, Jackie's and especially the Dude Ranch. In those days, you could stop by one of those nightclubs, especially the Dude Ranch and hear artists like Coleman Hoffens or Bologna's Monk. Um, and that jazz scene uh in Portland lasted for decades. Uh, for example, I remember Mr. Steen uh from the nineteen eighties at places like The Hobbit, which I still miss every day. Um, of course, gentrification has come along and displaced um many of those classic Portland jazz clubs. But I also want to remind all Portlanders that jazz is still very much part of our community and part of our culture. In fact, right now, uh, the Portland Jazz Fest is happening online. Uh, um, so if you go to uh pdxjazz.com, you can uh listen into a show tonight. Some of those shows are free. Um, I'm really excited that the Cathedral Park Jazz Festival is also coming up this summer. I think it's gonna happen live uh July sixteenth and eighteenth. So be sure to check out that. It's one of my favorite events of the year. Vanport Jazz Festival, speaking of uh history, um, also coming up this summer, August twenty-first. And uh, one of my favorites, I served on the boards for this, the Jim Pepper Native Arts Festival, I believe will be happening this year out in Park Rose or at least online. Um, I hope that we, I look forward to attending all of those and encourage uh my neighbors in Portland to do the same. Um, I know there's some uncertainty about how the spring and summer will unfold, but I encourage everybody to uh go online or go out um in the community and uh take in some of our local jazz greats like uh our guest and uh person of honor today, uh, Mr. Ron Steen. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Maps. Uh, I believe it was Commissioner Ryan, then Commissioner Rubio.
Sure, thanks, Mayor, and I'm editing my remarks a lot right now, uh, following both Commissioner Hardesty and Commissioner Maps, our professor of uh jazz, Portland History Maps. Um, I just want to say, I was reminiscing, perhaps like Commissioner Hardesty, uh, I remember seeing Ron Steen perform in the mid-eighties. Um, at the place that I think is called Remo's, it was uh where Gleason heads down to four or five, yeah. And then what was that one on Park Avenue, um, where you went down into the basement? Um, remember that jazz place? Commissioner Hardesty's on your head. Anyway, for those of you a couple of decades younger, just know that when um these type of moments come to the city council, it's with uh a lot of love in your heart that you um are from the city and that you've had people like Ron Steen there on the drums, um, leading a, a combo and just allowing your night to um be very pleasant and allow you to let go of your day. And um, today we've had a chance to think about sport and about now jazz and we're all really craving that. We're all really missing that joy and it's really needed. It's part of the balance that's missing in our, in our city right now and throughout the country and the world. So anyway, um, I honor you, Ron Steen. I'm so glad that you're a Portlander. You make our city special. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Rubio.
Thanks. I wanted to, to join my colleagues um and uh in first appreciating the mayor for bringing this proclamation forward. I couldn't uh agree more with um Commissioner Ryan's um acknowledging and explaining why it's important to bring these, these kinds of recognitions forward. I mean, this is part of Portland's history um that we should be uh remembering and bringing that forward for future generations to understand. Um, I also want to um join my colleagues in congratulating Ron Steen for his tremendous work to expand and sustain Portland's history and place in the jazz community and also for inspiring new generations of young artists uh both locally and beyond. Uh, for, and that's, that's um an immeasurable impact that, that you've had. Um, you can count me among the many that have had the pleasure of enjoying his music over the years. Um, and I look forward um to continuing that experience. Um, and as we hopefully chart a path forward out of the pandemic, uh, my colleagues and I are looking forward to working on some reopening celebrations in our city. So we look forward to inviting you to be a part of this endeavor. Um, I can't see how you cannot be a part of it. Um, timeline TBD, of course. Uh, but again, just want to say, thank you to Ron Steen for your lifetime of, of achievements and congratulations. We're so lucky to have you in our community.
Thank you, Commissioner Rubio. And with that, on behalf of the Portland City Council, I will read the proclamation. Colleagues, Mr. Steen could not be with us today. Uh, as Commissioner Maps had indicated, we are in the middle of the Jazz Fest and he is occupied, but he will absolutely see this. And so uh, thank you all for your great comments on behalf of the Portland City Council. Whereas, Ron Steen, a native of Portland, Oregon, his entire life and professional career serving as a mentor to many local musicians and has been inducted into the Jazz Society of Oregon Hall of Fame and the Oregon Music Hall of Fame. And whereas, Mr. Steen has consistently maintained an active weekly jam session in the Portland jazz community for over forty years, earning the title "The Godfather of Jazz Jams in Portland." And whereas, Steen has shared his talent and love of jazz as a bandleader and drummer with acclaimed jazz musicians alongside aspiring jazz musicians, imparting the values, tenants and culture of jazz. He is a true Portland jazz master as recognized by the Portland Jazz Festival. And whereas, Mr. Steen has served as a unifying thread connecting musicians, audiences, students in jazz through stages throughout his career, a mission he fulfills to this day. Whereas, as Mr. Steen states, "It's an honor to have played jazz in Portland over several decades with a vast array of amazingly gifted musicians who are so dear to me. I truly share this award with all of them." Now therefore, I Ted Wheeler, the mayor of the city of Portland, Oregon, the city of roses, do hereby proclaim February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one to be Portland Jazz Master Day in Portland and encourage all residents to observe this day. Mr. Steen, thank you. Congratulations and we wish you so much uh goodwill in the many, many years ahead. Thank you on behalf of all of us on the Portland City Council and indeed all of us here in the city of Portland. And then if I could find my agenda, here it is. Kealan, item one one three.
Authorize a contract with Cherry Road Technologies, Inc. for in-for public set their licenses and software for an amount not to exceed four million sixty thousand dollars over a five-year period.
I believe this is our jazz aficionado. Commissioner Mingus Maps, you're up.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I thank you, colleagues. I'm really delighted to bring this proposal uh to you. Um, the Bureau of Environmental Services and the Water Bureau collectively managed twenty-five billion dollars in assets. We use those assets to bring water and stormwater and sewer services to every Portland resident, every Portland business, um, and every visitor to Portland. Um, both of our bureaus, Water and Environmental Services, use asset management software to keep track of our materials. Um, right now, the software that we're using uh will no longer be supported after August of two thousand twenty-one. Um, in what is a really, I think, um, role model project, uh, Environmental Services and Water have collaborated to evaluate and select a new um asset tracking system uh that takes advantage of modern technologies and offers multiple opportunities for efficiencies and enhanced analytics and data sharing. I'm here today to tell us more about uh this important proposal. We have uh presentations from both bureaus. Uh, we have the technology managers for Water and Environmental Services. With Environmental Services, we have our technology manager, Dan Boyer. And with um, and with uh Water, we have uh technology manager, uh Maya Del Gota. Um, and with that, I'd like to turn it over to staff to tell us more.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, good morning, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners Hardesty, Maps, Rubio and Ryan. My name is Dan Bauer and I am the Technical Services Manager for the Bureau of Environmental Services. I am joined today by Maya Del Gota and Noel Lauerman of the Portland Water Bureau, Baron Howe of the Bureau of Environmental Services and Chief Procurement Officer Kathleen Brennis Mora. I'd like to take a moment to pause here and ask the council clerk to please show the presentation we have. Thank you. On next slide, please. The ordinance before council will authorize the chief procurement officer to enter a cooperative agreement with Cherry Road Technologies and the National Association of State Procurement Officials for software licensing for the Bureau of Environmental Services and Portland Water Bureau. This is a five-year agreement inclusive of both bureaus' software licensing costs and sets a not-to-exceed cost of four million sixty thousand dollars for the five-year period. This cost has been included in each bureau's budget. Next slide, please. It's useful at this point to offer a glimpse into what an asset management system is. An asset management system is comprised of the processes, tools, and technology used to manage a wide variety of utility assets, all the way from the simplicity of a pipe to the complexity of a treatment plant. Asset management systems support the management of assets and all related operational and maintenance work throughout the lifecycle of the asset, from design to decommissioning. Currently at the city, we have a wide variety of asset management systems from world-class processes to paper and pencil. And I'll wrap this up with a simple analogy. As SAP is critical to running city business operations, an asset management system is critical to running utility operations. Next slide, please. Collectively, the Bureau of Environmental Services and the Portland Water Bureau manage and maintain assets valued at over twenty-five billion dollars. These assets comprise the city's water, wastewater, stormwater, and natural systems. Currently, these assets are managed by a rich mix of legacy technology layered across multiple systems and work processes. The Bureau of Environmental Services and the Portland Water Bureau are facing an August twenty twenty-one end of support for one of the major asset management systems currently in use. For the last several years, the bureaus have been working together in partnership to assess the marketplace for asset management systems that would meet the bureau's needs. An RFI process was conducted in twenty nineteen to solicit responses to the combined bureau requirements for an asset management system. And following the RFI process, bureaus aligned on the selection of a single vendor for managing assets called in-for public sector. The Bureau of Environmental Services has successfully used in-for products for aspects of asset management for over a decade. Next slide, please. While the ordinance before council today is to authorize the use of a contract to purchase software, I want to highlight the unique and strategic opportunities that a future shared system represents for the bureaus. In a shared system, both bureaus see opportunities to continue to support the city's core values of anti-racism, equity, transparency, communication, collaboration, and fiscal responsibility. This will be the first time that both bureaus have leveraged this shared system, enhancing coordination and increasing transparency, communication, collaboration, and fiscal responsibility. Combined, these bureaus spend hundreds of millions of dollars each year on operations, maintenance, and projects. It's an exciting proposition to see that this work cannot just be focused on providing stable, functioning water systems, but also in supporting each bureau's anti-racism and equity work in ways that improve equitable service delivery and provide economic opportunities in partnerships with underrepresented communities. A shared, modern system and more mature asset management processes can provide more accurate and comprehensive information across all water assets to support their bureau in the use of an equity lens to determine and plan for how their work impacts the community, who benefits, and where disparities can be reduced or eliminated. In addition to those future benefits, we have to date realized opportunities to act equitably. We have worked with two local M W E S B certified firms for professional services such as project management and project planning. And there will be additional opportunities to work with more certified firms as the project moves forward, such as the Technology Oversight Committee Quality Assurance Vendor and other project team roles. I will now hand the presentation off to Maya Del Gota, Technology Manager for the Portland Water Bureau, to cover the approach to the project phases and director support for the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Uh, next slide, please. Good morning, Mayor and members of city council. My name is Maya Del Gota, Technology Manager at the Portland Water Bureau. In this section, I will explain the approach to this project and what comes after today's ordinance to procure a software licensing. Like Dan mentioned, in two thousand nineteen, both bureaus collaborated and coordinated to evaluate and select the software, which is in-for public sector through our RFI process. Today, we are here to get your authorization to procure this software. After getting access to the environment, both bureaus will be in pre-improvementation planning workshops with the software vendor to determine the system requirements, which will result in cost estimates, scope, and schedule for the implementation uh, phase of this project. We plan on returning to council to review the proposed implementation plan, including cost and uh, the contract approach. In addition, we are planning for engagement and oversight from the Technology Oversight Committee during the implementation phase of the project. After the implementation phase, we will transition to ongoing operations and an evolve phase where we will continuously improve to include new features and functions to support existing and new business flows to meet the asset management and maintenance needs of the two bureaus. Next slide, please. Also included in the materials today is a letter of support for this ordinance from the Bureau Directors of Environmental Services, Portland Water Bureau, and the Bureau of Technology Services, supporting the use of the cooperative agreement to purchase the software licensing. In fact, this is a unique opportunity for both bureaus to work together to manage their assets, which will result in transparency, better collaboration, fiscal responsibility, and most importantly, greater levels of service to the community. And uh, next slide, next slide, please. And this concludes our presentation, and our team is now available for any questions we may have on this ordinance.
Let's just say, well done. Uh, really a great job. Um, and uh, for me, I think it's really important that the three bureaus that are a part of this process, um, are bureaus that get funding to maintain uh, their assets. And so what I hope this leads to is uh, in community speak, uh, that when we're doing projects, we're all doing them together at the same time so that we're not disrupting neighborhoods um, over and over and over again. So I, I really applaud the thoughtfulness of this. I appreciated the last time you came and really connected the dots, at least for me. Um, but I think this is just an excellent uh, uh, example of when bureaus come together and do their planning together and monitor the assets together, that we're gonna get much better outcomes. So great work. Thank you all.
Very good. Any other comments or questions before we move to public testimony? Commissioner Ryan?
Yeah, similar to Commissioner Hardesty, I was just really taken with the fact that the bureaus came together collectively to make this decision and that you were in lockstep with the chief technology officer. Um, I think voters know that government can really get in trouble when we are not really thorough about these decisions. If you look at the state and across the country, when there's big fiascos that are tough on services for our residents, it's often when a technology decision goes haywire. So I just want to applaud what looks to be a very methodical process and um, with both bureaus and working with technology. So thank you. It makes it much easier for someone like me, who really should not make big decisions on technology, to know that this was vetted thoroughly. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. And with that, Kealan, do we have any public testimony on this item?
There is no one on the call to testify.
All right. Well, that makes it easy. This is a first reading of a non-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading. Kealan, I believe that completes the agenda.
It does.
All right. Thanks, everybody. We are adjourned.